It's unbelievable that we are paying out 143 million in 2022. We paid out in settlements. And so I think this body wants to understand the why, and then we can continue with the questionings. Thank you.
The cases vary. False arrests, malicious prosecution, use of force. I can't speak to all thousand of the cases before you, but we could certainly provide you with a broader summary of the types of cases.
I think that would be prudent. Does the NYPD or Law Department project ongoing trends in growing litigation expenses arising from claims of NYPD officer misconduct?
Growing claims? We...
Growing trends?
Trends. With respect to judgment and claims, those projections are done by the Office of Management and Budget.
What types of misconduct are generally subject to civil litigation? This is kind of a different way to ask the same question. Claims against the NYPD. And are there certain types of claims that are more likely to be settled before trial?
Most cases are settled before trial. The vast majority of cases are resolved before trial. We take only a small segment of cases to trial, and so I would say every type of case is a candidate for settlement.
So what is the difference between? You testified that there's a very small amount that actually go to trial. Can we talk about some of those cases? Why would they go to trial while others, for the most part, are being settled out of court?
There are cases in which, once there is a review, there is a belief that there was no wrongdoing which occurred, and that a defense must be presented in court. And I would step further and say that for our federal civil rights cases, we succeed at trial more than 80% of the time.
Thank you. What are the different ways for members of the public to submit complaints regarding NYPD officer misconduct?
They can go directly to CCRB and submit complaints to them. We have, you can go to the precinct and make a complaint. You can go to IAB directly, and we have a phone number and an email address. I believe it's IAB@NYPD.org that members of the public can make a complaint.
Thank you. What is the investigative process when individuals submit complaints directly at a police precinct? And at what point is the Internal Affairs Bureau notified? And who is responsible for conducting these investigations? And further, it's a big question, I apologize. And who is responsible for making the disciplinary decisions? I can go slower.
So when you go in, if you go directly to the precinct and complain, members of the police force who receive complaints are supposed to independently report that to IAB. So occasionally, we'll get a complaint where the member of the public tells IAB, or tells a member of the police department, and the member of the police department should tell IAB. IAB will evaluate. If it is in CCRB jurisdiction, we'll send it to CCRB for investigation. If it's not in CCRB jurisdiction, they'll evaluate it either for investigation by IAB, but there's also, they can send it directly to each borough of the eight boroughs we have, have investigative teams who can do investigations, or down to the precinct level.
Thank you. So what is the policy rationale for shielding IAB disciplinary outcomes from the public? Why would we, what is an instance in where we would do that? Want me to repeat?
Yeah, I'm not sure I understand.
What is the policy rationale for shielding the IAB disciplinary outcomes from the public?
Well, I believe, I'm not sure what you're referring to. I believe when we do issue discipline, we're publishing it on our website.
Oh, you are publishing it?
So we have an officer profile where you can search officers, and I'll have discipline. I think we're still working on making sure everything's on it. I can double-check where we stand on that. But if you search an officer, it'll have their substantiated discipline.
Thank you. Couple more questions. So when it comes to donations to NYPD by nonprofits, what are the different sources of non-governmental donations made to the NYPD?
So we get them from not very many places, from a few places. It's reported, anything over $5,000 is reported on the Conflict of Interest Board. And I should have printed that up and brought it with me, but I didn't. Obviously, it's not a great many. It's maybe five or six a year would have donations over 5,000 from private individuals or private entities.
Thank you. And finally, I'll pass it on to my colleagues for Intro 948 on NYPD data reporting. Does the NYPD have specific concerns regarding the public release of certain information requested in this bill? And if so, please explain.
Yeah, and I'll give you, I guess, two examples. I think the first one is publicizing the deployment numbers. You know, we don't want to necessarily have it public, and we give it to you guys every quarter and, you know, for your oversight purposes. But necessarily having what our deployment numbers are for every precinct publicly bears a little concern. And additionally, we're a little concerned about putting all our training online, although we give it to you quarterly for your oversight purposes. So those are two examples. You know, our team is looking through it to see if others, you know, that's a large report with a lot of data. A lot of it is fine to go public, and we're happy to work with you guys and figure out which ones may be appropriate and may not be.
Thank you. So to what extent does NYPD currently track and report on its overtime usage? And does the NYPD believe that there's any downside in increasing public transparency regarding the use of overtime?
So we track it. Our management and budget tracks it, and each individual, you know, has to track their own overtime. I think, you know, increasing, increasing the amount we report, there's not a downside. I think that just, at some point, it may come too granular to become difficult. And again, you know, what that line is, we're willing to work with the council and try to figure it out. But certainly, we're okay with increasing some of it, just, you know, figuring out what exactly it would be.
Thank you. Just one more, I apologize. So you testified, which I was pretty encouraged about, on Intro 538, 948, 638, and 781. Their final comment was, you look forward to working with the council on, you know, making these bills better or tweaking it so we could, so both the NYPD and the council both understand the spirit in which. What does that look like? You can just pick one of the bills out, but what does it look like to work back and forth with the council? What kind of tweaks do you think, or working with them, do you think that is needed?
So, well, I think, for example, on, I think, 948, we just mentioned a few things maybe we don't necessarily need to, would be concerned about making public. Usually, it is, we go through our operational people and figure out, you know, sometimes it's stuff we already collect, and it's not, it's an easy lift to put up. Sometimes it's stuff we don't collect, and we have to figure out a mechanism, which can be easier than others, right? So it's sort of figuring out where that line is.
Thank you so much. I encourage my colleagues to take NYPD up on that request. Thank you very much, and I'll pass it back to Committee Counsel.
Thank you, Chair. We're going to now hear from councilmembers for questions. First, we'll hear from Councilmember Hudson, Councilmember Stevens, Public Advocate Williams.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're going to do a five-minute timer for councilmember questions, so go ahead.
What was that?
Five-minute timer.
Thank you. My first question is, what are the NYPD's language access practices when conducting low-level encounters and consent searches?
Yeah, so that is in line with whenever we interact with a member of the public who has limited English proficiency or is hard of hearing. We have policies requiring us to get proper translation now. We have, I don't know exactly how many, but over 10,000 people who are bilingual in the department. So if you're bilingual, you can speak to the individual in the language if it's a mutual language. We also have Language Line and Google Translate on our phone, and we can call Language Line to help become a translator. That's what officers are supposed to do.
Do you know how often officers access interpretation lines to ensure non-English speakers understand their rights?
I don't, but I can get that information.
Okay, that would be helpful. Thank you. And as you heard earlier during the testimony, a neighborhood safety team officer recently intimidated Sammy Feliz into consenting to a search. How often is this happening, and do officers face discipline for doing this?
So, I mean, obviously, there's an individual case. I don't have data on how often that happens.
I'm just using that as an example.
Understood. But I think it is, you know, what we don't want to have happen is getting consent searches that aren't truly consenting, right? That is against what we would want, because if something had happened and led to an arrest, we would have gone to a court. A judge would have seen that and been like, that's not consent, and would have suppressed it. So our goal is to make sure that it is truly voluntarily and knowing, because it's counterproductive for it not to be.
So you don't know, then, how often it's happening?
We know how often we're seeking consent and how often consent is given.
You said you do know that.
We know how often we seek consent. We know how often consent is provided. Yes, we do have, and then we publish that on our website.
But you don't know how often somebody might be coerced into providing consent?
No, but I would say, you know, our training and our policy is for that not to happen.
I understand. There's training and policy for a lot of things not to happen.
Right.
A lot of things do happen, so.
Understood, but we, you know, we expect our officers not to, you know, follow our guidelines, follow our procedures, and make sure that when they get consent, it's truly consent.
Okay. Just a quick follow-up on that point specifically. Do neighborhood safety teams use consent searches and/or Level 1 and Level 2 stops more than other officers?
I don't, I don't know how that compares.
Is that something you can follow up?
I can try, yeah.
Okay. And then, in your testimony, you referenced that these bills might hindrance solving a case like that. The example you used was of a case of like a missing child, for example. Do you know what percentage of NYPD cases are solved, and what the average time it takes to solve or close a case is?
So, and I just wanted to clear, I was only referring to Intro 586. I was not referring to Intro 538.
Okay.
I don't believe.
That's my bill, so I'm glad to hear that.
Right, that's why I wanted to mention that. It's, Intro 586 is the concern, and it's about the lower level, having to document all the lower-level encounters. Our solve rate, we actually post it online for the seven major crimes, at least. I don't have it with me in front of me, but I can...
I can just share, my data is, I'm sure, not as up-to-date as your data might be, but in the first quarter of 2020, the NYPD solved 31.7% of major crimes compared to 36.8% of the year prior. So that's a rate far below even 50%. And I guess my point is just that, to use the example of this bill hindering your ability to solve the case, when your solvability of cases is far below 50%, to me, isn't a legitimate excuse for why you shouldn't be able to, you know, adhere to the proposed bill.
Yeah, and I think my actual, specific example, I was talking, was about a missing child.
Right.
And so that wouldn't show up necessarily on this data, but what we want to do is have officers as quickly as possible, as, talk to as many people to find that child.
Understood.
And if there's, and every time you do that, it's a Level 1 encounter, and if we are stopping to document that, that's the concern.
And I totally understand that, but I think also to the earlier points that were made, we know the type of stops that you're making, generally speaking, right? We know that black and brown people, black and brown neighborhoods are subjected at far higher levels or rates to being stopped. And so my point is just that, to use that as an excuse for perhaps not being able to fulfill what's being asked by this bill is, you know, unacceptable to me, because, you know, we know what the statistics are. And if your solvability rate was far greater, or even just over 50%, but certainly closer to 100%, then, you know, I could maybe give a little leniency. But considering it's only in the 30%, maybe it's higher, I don't know if you are able to share the numbers once you have them, but, you know, I'm just making the point that I don't really think that's a viable excuse for why you wouldn't necessarily be able to adhere to the proposed bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have questions from Councilmember Stevens, followed by the Public Advocate.
Well, before I start my questions, I just wanted to thank the families and individuals that share their stories. We know that sometimes sharing your stories is re-traumatization, and so I just wanted to acknowledge that their stories were heard, and we're here to fight and support you through this process. But I'm really deeply concerned about the amount of money that is being paid out to individuals, because, one, seems like, obviously, lack of transparency and over policing our communities, and just even thinking about my bill, Intro 638, and seeing that, you know, there is other funds that NYPD gets from outside sources. Maybe if you were paying them out from that money, it would look a little different. So, you know, that's something that I'm really concerned about. But what's the different sources of non-governmental donations made to NYPD?
There are a few sources, and I can pull exactly where it is. It's not a massive amount. It's probably, you know, we reported in our Conflict of Interest Board reports, five or six a year, that are, you know, non-governmental entities are donating more than $5,000. Most, it's, you know, not significant amounts of money. But there is one donor that would probably be over $1 million in a lot of years, and it's the Police Foundation.
What is the examples of NYPD use of large donations received from NYPD?
So a few of examples is, you know, it funds the Crime Stoppers and Operation Gun Stop. They, it's helped us purchase, helped us fund the Explorers Program, fund the creation of 127 Penn, which is a community center. It helped us do some ABLE training, and ABLE is Active Bystandership for Law Enforcement Training, which teaches officers to intervene when other officers may be starting to, they notice other officers starting to get angry or frustrated. It actually helped pay for our First Body One Camera Pilot Program, as an example. So those are examples of what we use it for.
How does the NYPD respond to concerns that large donations to the NYPD Foundation could be used as a means of gaining favor with the department or unduly influenced department priorities?
Yeah, I don't think that's a concern. I think this is money that's used to help the NYPD with certain projects, right? And Crime Stoppers is a perfect example, where it helps us put out reward money to help solve crimes, right? So I think that, I don't think this is a real concern. None of this money is used for anyone's personal gain. It's to help our joint effort in being, in solving crime and increasing community interactions and improving community interactions.
What's the NYPD's relationship with the New York City Police Foundation? Like, what's the relationship? How does it work, and like, how does it interact with each other?
Yeah, they, you know, do some fundraising for us and will help, you know, it's, you know, they're not at our direction. They are their own entity, but they will, you know, have ideas that help fund certain projects, certain things for us and help us. It's sort of a mutually helpful relationship.
How's it determine which, where donations from NYPD Foundation will be allocated within the department? Who determines that?
I think that is, you know, senior leadership will help determine what the best use of the money is for. And we do have a written policy, so.
So just my prior assignment was in the First Deputy Commissioner's office, and the NYPD does have a published policy on making requests to the Police Foundation, so anybody who has a program or a project that they want to put forward, that they think would benefit from Police Foundation funding, primarily to serve the community in some way, can submit that in writing up through the First Deputy Commissioner, who will review it, and then make a recommendation to either approve or disprove, and then work with the Executive Director from the Police Foundation to make sure it fits their mandate and their scope. So for example, one of the projects I was involved in, we had police officers in Queens working with a local community group to solicit donations to get prom dresses for young ladies in the community who could not afford one. And that's something we brought to the foundation. Hey, would you be interested in getting involved in this? And they took it on, and they assisted with that, so we were able to get donations and buy dresses to then give them out to community members. Another program that the Foundation, very, very involved in, is Director Clark talked about, the Community Center at 127 Pennsylvania Avenue was a big project, getting that renovated and facilitating its use by the community, but also the programs that were being run out of there. So for example, one of the programs is called the Options Program, and that's using virtual reality equipment and scenarios to teach young people life skills, how to de-escalate situations, for example. And the beauty of that program was that the young people actually came in, helped write the scenarios, helped develop the programs, and then with their friends from the neighborhood would then go through these virtual reality simulations. And then, as a next step in that process, the Foundation brought in, or reached out to many private businesses to solicit participation in an effort to give people jobs. So young people from the community, then either some youth employment or other jobs where they can be mentored and trained for, you know, for their careers. So that's an example of how the department does it, but there's a formal process. It's all in writing through the First Deputy Commissioner, and then ultimately, the Police Commissioner and the Police Foundation make the final approval.
Thank you. Those are all my questions. I just wanted to just make sure that we are having a transparent process, because other city agencies are not able to solicit donations and have donations to supplement programs that they want. And so, especially when we have an agency that is one of the highest-line items in the budget, it's, to me, make sure that we have real transparency. So thank you.
Public Advocate Williams?
Thank you so much. And first, excuse me in advance, if I try to push you along, I want to try my best to keep respected time. But I also wanted to just say thank you to Councilmembers Avila, Hudson, and Caban for their support on my bill, and the advocates and the families here as well. I did want to make note first, just in framing, it was interesting, you saying that you believe you're the most transparent agency in the city. Not sure if I fully agree, but I do want to make sure I mention that you're also the most powerful in terms of being able to make life and death situations than any other agency, and the only agency that I know of that doesn't have the accountability that will come with accidentally killing someone. And so I would hope there'd be transparency when it comes to that. I do want to also understand the testimony, there was initial 638 and 781. I wasn't clear if you were supporting those bills or not supporting those bills.
I mean, I think we support the intent, and we're willing to work with the council on making, you know, working on the language and figuring out exactly what it'll end up being.
Okay. Because the vast, it seems like the vast majority of them, you haven't supported, and that's, that's what I found, actually, in my over decade of having discussions, most of the bills are not supported. When they are forced upon the department, then the testimony the next year says how transparent accountability the department is. So I just wanted to make clear, hopefully, the discussions could be more about how we can do this thing together, instead of the tension that usually occurs. Just really quickly, I want to make sure I get this right. Under the DEBOR framework, the lawfulness, lawfulness of an encounter is determined in part by whether the officer had a good reason to approach the person and conduct the encounter. How does the NYPD determine the lawlessness of a Level 1 encounter, or the lawless, lawfulness of a Level 2 stop, without knowing the factors that led the officer to make the stop in the first place? If you don't, particularly if you're not taking those, documenting them.
Well, it goes to our auditing practices where we, so for example, doing citywide random samples systematically of body camera video for all police actions, and then looking to see what the action was. And yes, I agree, the whole point of the DEBOR was to determine whether or not the initial purpose for the police contact with the civilian was appropriate. So we do look at that with our auditing, like I may have mentioned in my office alone, last year, we looked at over 73,000 body camera videos. We're also auditing in a more systematic way, body camera videos, to make sure that the police action is lawful and appropriate, and to identify stops, if they do in fact occur, and then follow. And part of that auditing process, in addition to looking at body camera video, will be looking at 911 calls, radio transmissions, and other reports that are prepared to get a more holistic view of what the event was about.
Sorry. I, thank you, but one, it sounds like you're doing it so you could just make it public. It sounds like it's just being internal, you're already doing what it is that we're asking for. But do New Yorkers know that they don't have to stay, and they don't have to answer questions when they're stopped in a one and two?
I mean, yeah, I mean, I don't know what the average New Yorker knows.
So it might very well feel like a Level 3.
You know, I think with the, the, what, yeah.
So the NYPD has previously published Know Your Rights materials, in addition to the Court Pointed Monitor on her website, has information about DEBOR and Terry and Know Your Rights, and the CCRB publishes that as well.
So maybe officers on the camera can just let people know that they can leave and not answer questions. It'll make life easy for everyone. Unless you needed further information, that will come under the Level 3, and you don't want to tell them that.
No, I mean...
You know, I think the challenge comes up, when we talk about, the vast majority of these are public service and public safety conversations, right? I respond to a 911 call. You called the police. I ask you, did you call? What happened? Kind of counterintuitive to begin that conversation with, you don't have to talk to me, but did you call? Or, you don't have to talk to me, but we're looking for this missing child who, you know, wandered away.
I understand. I think we should have a discussion. I get it, and I, if I can get a little grace just to get these last couple of questions, I get it, and I think we should have a discussion. But I also want to make sure, just for context, do you believe that there is still biasness, whether unconscious or conscious, in how we conduct policing in this city?
You know, I think that's something we've worked on. You know, we train the entire department on it.
I just want to know if you think it still exists.
Yeah, I mean, look, that's, right, that's something we're actively working on. It's part of our training, trying to...
I probably won't get a yes or no, but that's a question. Also, do you believe that there is overpolicing in these communities as well? Police are being asked to do too much. There's too much policing in these communities. It's a yes or no as well.
Well, I mean, I don't think so. I think what we're trying to do is find the right balance between how much policing there is to, you know, obviously, we don't want to go back to the years of 2011 and the Bloomberg years, and we're not anywhere close to that. We want to try to find the right balance to solve crimes, you know, use precision policing to find the right people.
I appreciate that. I don't, I don't know if we're not there, because we don't collect that on one or two stops. But I do want to say, and I'll close out with this, the reason I'm asking is because there is a clear racial difference in who's being stopped and who's not, whether it's, and who's being policed and who's not. And often, the answer is because of the violence that is occurring there. That is true. But I heard that 10 years ago. I heard it in the 90s when I was growing up, and I heard it in the 80s before that, and people have heard it for decades, which means, at some point, what we're doing isn't effective, because it's not changing the way that the violence is occurring. And so all I'm saying is, let's have a discussion about what public safety actually is, because we seem to have these tense conversations around this. And to quote a colleague of mine who can take the credit when they speak, it seems like we're playing whack-a-mole, because every time we hit one thing, there's another policy that falls true to form to the policing that was there before, so we have to come back. And so my hope is that at some point, we can have a discussion about what public safety actually is, and what policing's role is in there. Because I think you're wrong. We are being overpoliced, even as there's violence here, because police by themselves cannot solve these problems. If they could have, we would have solved it already. And so that was frustrating to me, because we're continuing to say, why are we doing these things, without actually getting to the root of the problem. And so I'm really hoping that this comes off as wanting to have true discussions on this, because when public sees these tensions, they call one person anti, and that's not helpful. I do think there's a role that needs to be played with our law enforcement. I do think there's a role that needs to be played with our law enforcement that we should be supporting. But when we're asking them to do all of the jobs of so many people and not giving the funding and support to the other agencies and community groups, it doesn't help us. Thank you.
Thank you, public advocate. Now we have Councilmember Aviles, followed by Vernakov.
Great, thank you. In your testimony, you note that for Intro 586, reporting would disincentivize officers from approaching people. I find that statement highly problematic, given that this is their fundamental job.
Yeah, you know, what I was trying to indicate is, you know, there are these situations where we're going to speak with multiple people, right? And every time we do a report, does it make it that we, instead of speaking to 50, we speak to 40, we speak to 30? Right? There's still a lot of people, but does it change how often we're doing it? That was the goal, is trying to explain, explain that.
It's called discretion. How many of the stops, level-one and two, have, you mentioned you review all the, all the video footage? So video for level-one, two, and three stops, is that correct?
No, we conduct audits and we review samples of videos. Yeah, with 23-plus 24 million videos, adding about 220,000 videos a week because we expanded the video recording requirement, it's impossible to view all of them, so we view samples.
So you did, I thought you noted you conducted an audit of half of the videos. And you noted 3.2 million level-ones, 35,000 level-twos, and 35 level-threes.
Right, so those numbers, about the three and a half million, et cetera. So that's based upon reviewing body camera video and looking at the metadata associated with those videos and how videos are categorized. In terms of the half that we audited, that pertains to level-three stops that occurred. Each year, we conduct audits quarterly, every precinct, PSA, transit district, looking at their stops. And over the course of a year, we end up auditing approximately half of all of those level-three encounters.
How many, how many times in your reviews have you noted a misclassification of a level-one, two, or three in your review?
We do find a few. We don't track that number, but it, because it does happen, but infrequently.
If you don't track the number, how would you know whether it's frequent or not?
Because whenever we identify a situation where we see that, for example, a level-three stop occurred, but it was not properly documented, we do follow up on every one of those. And so while we don't produce a report on that, we do.
How many follow-ups have you done in the last year?
We don't, we don't track that data.
So you see our conundrum here. You do follow-ups, but you don't track where you follow.
Right.
You don't track the data, so you don't know who you follow.
Because there are very few that we identify, and so we don't track it.
Okay. So Chief Pantele, you've mentioned that the federal monitor reviews bias-based policing incidents and investigations. But from our review of the last several monitors' reports, it looks like the monitor is still waiting on the NYPD to develop and implement any form of internal NYPD auditing mechanisms for ensuring the 14th Amendment compliance on race discrimination. What is the status of the department's 14th Amendment compliance plan? Why has it taken so long? And when is the federal court found that NYPD stopped in first practices to violate the 14th Amendment almost 10 years ago?
Right, so the city actually submitted a proposal for 14th Amendment compliance to the monitor in 2015. Ultimately, it's the monitor's responsibility to determine when we're in compliance. We have put forth a number of ideas in terms of what that would look like. Essentially, it comes down to totality of the circumstances. And it's all of the things that we have done. So it begins with Fourth Amendment compliance and all the mechanisms that we have in place, whether it's through auditing, training, improved documentation that have already been put in place. And also, it's the other mechanisms, so, such as we conducted implicit bias training for the entire department. It's now part of the recruit curriculum. We have enhanced supervisory training regarding Fourth Amendment compliance and documenting level-three stops. So all of that together gets us to 14th Amendment compliance.
So will you submit to the council the record of your Fourth Amendment compliance trainings with, compliance plan with the timeline?
Yeah, we can put something together. We'll talk about what that material is.
Great. But the last plan, it's been since 2015?
Well, that was our initial proposal for 14th Amendment compliance. Ultimately, like I said, it's for the monitor to decide what that ultimately looks like and whether or not and when we're in compliance. It's something that they have not made a determination on in their reports up until now.
I'm sorry, just one last question, Chair, if you will. Are you suggesting, sir, that the monitor has not requested any updated information in terms of the compliance plan?
In terms of 14th Amendment compliance, they have requested. And it's something that we're working on with the law department.
And when is that going to be submitted?
We don't have a timeline yet.
And when was the last submission?
We initially submitted a letter to the monitor back in 2015 with our recommendations for what that looked like.
Thank you, Chair.
Now we have councilmembers Vernakov, followed by Ariola and Holden.
Thank you. There are millions of interactions with NYPD every year. Majority of them are overwhelmingly positive. And the fact is that majority of police officers wake up every day with one goal in mind, to save lives and keep our communities safe. They are not perfect. But we cannot dismantle, defund, and demoralize the entire NYPD because of a few bad actors who are incompetent and have bad intentions. So many members of our NYPD are men and women of color who come from all backgrounds, persuasions, and denominations. And they too have families to feed. The last several years have done nothing but demonize and demoralize our police. I ask that instead of stifling, unreasonably burdening, and handcuffing our police, we find a balanced approach to improve the department, including more training and community engagement. These bills we're talking about today are all reporting bills. Of course, we need transparency from every agency. But to date, no agency or department in this city is inundated with as many reporting requirements as the NYPD is. So the question must be asked, in an era of rising crime, what value do these additional reporting requirements provide? Whether intended or not, you cannot blame the public for seeing these bills before the committee today as a defund and demoralize the police by other means. After that slogan has lost its potency and support, especially in communities most affected by crime, public safety, and quality of life concerns. If we must ask for more reports, I believe at the very least, two prongs must be satisfied. One, it should be tangibly related to officer retention and strength so that our officers that are experienced are not taking early retirements or transferring to localities where they'll receive more support from politicians and the public at large. And two, it should be something that is already occurring, information and data already collected. These prongs are satisfied by my bill, Introduction 370, which this committee will not hear today, even though it has more cosponsors than some reporting bills that will be heard. My question is, Chair, if you could describe, Officer, the kind of resources and the amount of staff the department would require in order to comply with some of these bills?
Yes, so I think that the staffing has been a concern. As, you know, we do believe in transparency, but there have been a lot of reporting bills and we don't receive any funding for them. So it is incumbent on us to find people to run the data. You know, some of it is having our cops report the data, using reports, and then having people run and make sure it is, you know, good data that can be reported to the public. And we have an entire unit devoted to that. There is a concern with the increasing amount of reports that we need to pull more and more people. And as you know, we were down 2,400 cops and 1,200 civilians. So sort of there's a push here of where the, you know, we want to work with the council on transparency, but there's a push on where to get the people to run this.
And how would giving the CCRB more power affect the morale and job satisfaction of police officers, in your opinion?
You know, I think that's a hard question to answer. You know, we do support accountability for officers who are, you know, not doing what they're supposed to do. And we support working with CCRB to find that accountability. But I'm not going to opine on necessarily the morale that this will do.
Do you think that the proposed bills may be going too far in granting more authority to the CCRB? And what are the potential unintended consequences of such legislation?
So, you know, I think, you know, part of this is, for us, it's how we can work the sheer volume of body-worn camera video we have and the legal issues we have with it make it a little bit difficult for us to say that we can just automatically give it to the CCRB, right? So we have, we'd have to do a lot of work to segregate the body-worn camera video that sealed records for sexual, you know, people, picking people with sexual assault in order to provide that. So, you know, I think that's another area where the work would be very difficult in order to comply with.
Thank you. Our critique of the NYPD is that too many officers are on desk duty and that NYPD already exceeds their overtime. Will these bills create more desk duty and overtime for officers?
I think that's, you know, if, certain bills, particularly the one with, you know, granting direct access to CCRB, the amount of work involved would require a lot of human power to go through 24 million videos. It's insurmountable. So I think there's generally, the amount of people we'd have to pull off to do it would be a very difficult thing for us to do. I think that's an accurate statement, that that bill in particular would require that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ariola, followed by Holden.
Thank you, Chair. At a glance, the NYPD's website indicates there are already, that they are already responsible for at least 33 reports, including monthly, quarterly, and annual reports. In addition, the NYPD responds to tens of thousands of requests from advocates, and there was over 24,000 in 2022, according to the website. How can we really expect the NYPD to add even more reporting requirements without increasing the size of their force or a pay increase to their staff? We keep asking the NYPD to do less with more while continuing to pile on more. That has no value on public safety. The council needs to be hearing bills that will help reduce crime rather than bills that will continue to overburden the police department, especially since some of the bills we are hearing today are duplicative. 911 calls are up, 311 calls are up, and the police are down in their workforce. We need to figure something out. We cannot keep asking for more reporting bills and take officers that are necessary on the streets and put them on desk duty when we just took them off desk duty so that could patrol our subways and keep people safe. We have measures put in place already. We have to wait to see if all the prior measures are working and how we can continue, you know, to make it better. We cannot continue to stack more measures, one on top of the other, to the NYPD. We should not be passing more bills that continue to deplete and demoralize and de-staff the NYPD. Thank you.
Okay, now we have Councilmember Holden, followed by Councilmember Dillows.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. My question is for Corporation Council. You testified that regards to Intro 944, that the proposal to require 15 days after each complaint is received would ensure, and that's very strong, would ensure that posted information would be inaccurate. I mean, that's a very strong statement. Were you consulted at all on this bill? Was your office consulted before this bill was introduced?
I do not know whether some of my colleagues may have been asked. I learned of this bill in early March. And the fact of the matter is, many complaints name defendants as John Doe. So we would not be posting accurate information within 15 days.
And would, in your opinion, would that, could that lead to more frivolous lawsuits?
It would lead to confusion.
Confusion. And we want to do that in the city council, apparently, confuse people. Because this is, you know, I have 11 bills that would make probably the police officer's job a little easier and address the problem. But those would never, never get heard. These bills get heard, which I've been going to civic meetings for 44 years, let's say. And I hate to admit that, but 44 years I've been going to civic meetings, community boards. I never heard any of, any of my constituents talking about this stuff that's in these bills. I never heard anybody talk, we want more cops. We want more police officers on the street. I never heard somebody saying, we need to make the cops report on every stop. That's a joke. That's an absolute joke. How would a police officer report on every time they came to an accident scene or an incident and question somebody? How long, and they complain about overtime. How long would that take a police officer to do all these reports? Anybody? I mean, just imagine if they, you know, I listen to the scanner, believe it or not. And I hear each unit, each police car, each patrol, holding five or six jobs to 911. Imagine if they had a report on every single person they spoke to. Insane.
It just becomes exponentially very, very cumbersome and difficult and time-consuming. Even if each individual report only takes a few minutes to do, it's the cumulative effect. I can think of many of the body camera videos we look at, police officers, where we have many officers responding to a crime scene and then spreading out and, you know, knocking on doors or approaching people. You know, did you see what happened? Did you hear anything? Do you know the victim? You know, those very, very kind of common sense questions.
And then by telling them, by the way, you can walk away from me if you want. Like the public advocate said, you can just walk away from me. You don't have to answer my question. You don't have, you can just get out of here. And you don't have to tell me what you just saw, if you witnessed an accident. I mean, this, stuff just doesn't make sense. You know, if we're trying to keep this city safe, does that make any sense to you?
Yeah, and I think, I think they're certainly on the level ones, it's certainly an issue. And I'll give an example. We had one of the videos we use to train for level-one interactions. It involves a single officer's body-worn camera video. And in about a minute, he has eight level-one interactions. And that's just him, right? The other partner you can see walking around, having level-one interactions. I couldn't count that when I looked at it. So, you know, I think, like the chief said, the cumulative effect certainly is, can be overwhelming, right, for an average officer. And, you know, sort of having to document everything could impact their ability to do their job and desire to do their job.
It will impact their jobs. It will make, we're having trouble recruiting now competent officers now. There's not a line around the block waiting to become police officers because the war on police continues. And we're going to get to a point where this is going to be an unlivable city if we keep putting more burdens on our police officers who risk their lives every time they leave the house. You don't hear that very often here. But I just want to talk about donations, which I don't understand why people are questioning donations. I mean, to me, again, so who's, somebody who, when I saw the officers in my local precinct didn't have bicycles, for instance, we got a $5,000 donation for bicycles. So the officers can have bicycles and patrol the neighborhood. When our police officers then, and this was years ago, were using their own police, their own, by the way, private cars to go on patrol. Went to the police foundation. But when we saw that the officers needed exercise equipment, the community worked with the precinct and we got equipment, exercise equipment donated. Does this sound like nefarious to you? It gets to a point where it's so absurd, some of these bills. Like I said, I got 11 bills that should be heard because it would make, like, police officers carrying sound meters when people are complaining because they can't sleep at night. That they could actually write a ticket. These bills never get, never, you know, see the light. But these bills that we see today, which obviously none of you were consulted on, and you even said, you don't even know, because you wouldn't. you would say 15 days would be a problem, because the information would be inaccurate. I mean, it's just, this stuff gets heard. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
And now we have Councilmember De La Rosa, followed by Brewer and Palladino.
Thank you so much. I'll just say for the record that two New Yorkers were killed by police in my district in the last six months, and that is why this hearing and this information is important, because we would otherwise not know that. And so I'm jealous of my colleagues whose constituents don't have to go through this, but mine's do. And so I want to ask a question regarding Intro 586, just to dig in a little. I know our speaker asked a line of questioning, and some of our colleagues did too, but you testified that reporting on police encounters during emergency situations, like the kidnapping example, would slow down officers. I'm just struggling to understand how that could be, and if you're saying that officers would have to stop after each person they talked to to actually fill out a report.
Yeah, I mean, that's a possibility, right? So, you know, in a missing child scenario, you're going to talk to 50 people, right? You can't, no one's going to remember exactly who you talked to. So maybe some officers will do it and then try, and through recollection, figure it out, and probably miss some. Otherwise, they have to do it as it's happening, right? So there, I mean, officers could go either way, but either way, there's downside.
But right now, officers are required to issue reports after Level 3 stops, right?
Sure, but Level 3 stops aren't going to be nearly the same volume.
But right now, when they do issue those reports, they can go back and use their camera footage, body worn camera footage, to fill in gaps or to fill in information. So in the situation where, in the example that you used with the kidnapping, couldn't they go back and use their body worn camera information if there was a question about information that was missing or anything like that? I mean, they're making the reports after the stop or after the encounter.
Right, but then that also has another unintended consequence, right? So either two things are happening. If you go use your body worn camera video, is you're leaving your patrol a little early in order to come back and do your paperwork, and say if it's 50 people you spoke to, you're going to need to give yourself time, or you're doing it the other day to tour, and we are using overtime to fill out paperwork, right? So there's unintended consequences either way.
But in the current practice, there is still that judgment call being made about the time needed to fill out the reports regardless. So that overtime is still being generated in the practice right now. I'm trying to understand what's the difference between what this bill is asking for and the current practice.
Right.
Yes, I think it's a question of scale and unintended consequences. So yes, for a Level 3 Terry stop, a report must be filled out, but when you look at the numbers, it comes out to less than, you know, one stop report per police officer per year. However, when we're talking about Level 1 encounters, which are those routine encounters, you know, "Did you call the police? Are you okay? Do you need help? Have you seen this lost child?" That becomes almost every encounter, every assignment that a police officer responds to every day. So right now, with our current staffing models and the number of 911 and 311 calls, I think last year, about 7 million 911 calls, the average police officer in New York City on patrol is responding to 27 assignments a day. Each body camera video is an average length of about 10 minutes long, so it could take, and it could take hours to upload all that video off your camera. So you've got to dock your camera, upload the video. At some point, it just becomes impossible to do because there's no time to do it without taking people off patrol to say, "Okay, today you're going to sit and watch body camera video and fill out reports that, quite frankly, do not in any way enhance public safety or accountability."
Well, I would just say that given the exorbitant amount of payouts that the city is paying every single year for abuse of force and brutality, I think that it makes sense for us to have more transparency, because that is the mechanism to build some sort of trust and accountability. I'm going to ask also about the neighborhood safety teams and the new units that are being deployed into communities. Some of our communities are pilot communities, like his mine. What is the protocol for accessing body worn cameras if there are incidents with those units?
The protocol for any cameras, whether recorded by a patrol officer or by an NST officer, is the same. All requests are sent through email to our team. They all receive the same analysis. It's determined whether or not we can release it, laws that prohibit it, if redactions are necessary before we release it. So they're treated exactly the same.
And, sorry, just going to follow up real quick. And if there is an incident of a death that occurs in that situation, does that have a separate process, or is it still the same?
I think if there's a death, the Force Investigation Division will take over and conduct the interviews and reviews. I think the body one camera video would be shut down from general access in those cases, prior to doing an interview, I think.
Yeah, so when there's any death that results from police action, the NYPD's Force Investigation Division, which is part of the Office of the First Deputy Police Commissioner, is tasked with investigating those cases. They will work closely with either the District Attorney's Office, or in most cases, the New York State Attorney General's Office, on those investigations. They will immediately collect all of the body cameras, upload the video, and lock down the video, so people across the city, in the police department, cannot watch the video. Then they control access to it. That also prevents the officers who were involved from watching the video until such time is appropriate.
Councilmember Brewer?
Thank you. I just have a question, because I had a recent incident of hate and bias in my office. So I wasn't there, but superior staff, management staff, reported it to the precinct. And I must admit, and I love my precincts, but it didn't go anywhere. So then, of course, Gail Brewer gets on the phone, and next thing I know, commanding officer, hate crimes, everybody was in the office. What should have happened in that case? In other words, we're looking for data because sometimes things don't go right. And I think in this particular case, the young woman was quite upset. It didn't go the way it should have. It should have gone, I assumed, to the hate crimes task force. So is that what should have happened? Because that's why we need some of this data, is when things don't go right, we got to know it. So what should have happened? Local precinct didn't really act.
Yeah, and I'm familiar...
You know the case, maybe.
I know the case. I'm not, I don't know every detail of it, but I think typically when we have an incident with a possible bias element, the hate crimes task force should have been notified. I don't know if it was notified until you intervened or if that happened, but...
No, I think when I intervened, I'm afraid.
Right. So I know typically that happens. Now, sometimes, that's usually the case, and most officers want to have the experts come in. I understand that may not have happened here, but...
How does that get recorded in terms of data? In other words, the person who responded from the precinct didn't really move with it, so that would have been reported as a what? A hate crime, but not necessarily calling anybody else?
So it could have been, depending on the circumstance, you know, if it's, even if it didn't rise to the level of hate crime. Many times, some of the hate crimes end up being harassment, which isn't one of the crimes that is listed as a hate crime, right? So they, I don't know, I don't know enough about that in specific incidents, but you would take a complaint report for harassment, and supervisor's supposed to sign off on it, and hopefully the supervisor sees it. If they haven't notified, the supervisor would make the notification.
Okay. I bring it up only because I'm worried that that kind of data, the reason we ask for all this data, if I may say, is to try to catch situations like that, so they don't happen again. And to me, that would have been an example of not the greatest police work, and would have shown up perhaps in the data. Second question, how do you, this is more general, but how in the world do we, do you suggest some of these payouts not being so huge? Public advocate, to his credit, said, "We have to sit down and figure out how to do better policing together." He always says that, and I agree with him. But what do you suggest in terms of payouts? 143 million is a lot. I don't know if it's worse or better than it is...